For once, it would be great and be able to contribute my experience and expertise in the planning process. I believe in in development and in good development and then make ensuring that that happens and and complying with present requirements of zoning and and just thought I'd like the opportunity to serve my neighbors in our any capacity I can.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cherry? Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Must have been perfect. I do like Sandra's odds a lot better than mine, though.
And then last one for planning commission, but also for sustainability is Austin. I don't know if I'm gonna say this right. Amoni? Amon? Amon? Okay. Amon. Okay. Sorry.
Hi, everyone. My name is Austin Amon. Simply put, you know, I'm I'm here because I want to give back. I live at three twenty-three North New Street. My wife and I, we both graduated from the university. We're both from New Jersey. I like to tell people that we fell in love on the back porch of a frat house. So that's our claim to fame. After bouncing around for a number of years in Philadelphia, in Chad's Ford, we finally bought a house in Media because it was kind of like Westchester. And it was closer to New Jersey at the time, and my wife's a mama's girl, so she wanted to be close to her. And after being there for eighteen months, we realized that our hearts were in Westchester. And there was no other place that we took so much pride in. So when the opportunity presented itself for us to purchase a home here last August, we did. We wanted our daughters to grow up in this community. We want them to look forward to the Christmas parade. We want them to be teenagers running around High Street at the courthouse. Those are the things that we're really excited about. And there's no place that I take greater pride in. So for me, this was giving back to the community that's given us so much already, but also will give our family so much. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for us, sir? Ama?
Which which are you more interested in, the planning commission or sustainability?
I like my odds on sustainability based on the roster here. So I'm a realist.
So why sustainability? What are you interested in there?
Really, it comes back to just getting involved. You know, I'm a quick learner. I'd be lying to you if I said I had this extensive background in all these sustainability product projects. I don't. But I'm someone that when I give my all to something, I give one hundred and ten percent. I've always been active. I was active in high school. I was active in my fraternity. I ran philanthropic events for that fraternity. I was the recruitment chair for that. I've always been someone that wants to be a leader. This was the avenue to do that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Questions, sir? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yeah. Okay, moving on. Karen Myers, who's gonna interview for Westchester Library Board of Directors. Hi, Karen. How are you? Come on down.
Nervous. Hi. Never had this kind of interview before. My name's Karen Myers. I've been living in Pocops in Township for over twenty-five years. And I saw that you were looking for somebody on the board of the library. And since I have a deep and ongoing love of books, I was very interested in it. I have served on other boards in the community. I was the president of the United Way of Southern Chester County. I also served on the board of the Chester County Art Association here in Westchester, as well as TikTok, an early learning center in Kennet Square. So I do bring board experience and a love of books and a love of this community to this.
Great. Thank you. Questions for Ms. Myers? No? Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Yeah, thank you. And then lastly, who Christopher Day, who is joining us virtually, and he's interested in serving on either the planning commission, Human Relations Commission, the Library Board Directors, or this sustainability commission. Mr. Day, are you? You can hear us?
Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Yep, all good. Yep. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to serve?
Yes, thank you. So as you see, this is not my my normal office. As you see, I'm in New York City for a work meeting, so I stood outside, so I apologize for the any background noise. I'm just interested. So my my wife and I actually recently purchased a house in Westchester. We've been living here about eighteen months. I'm someone always been involved in public service. I currently work in public service. I'm I work for the Attorney General's Office. I'm a history, working for the prosecutor here in New York as well. And I always wanted to get back to my community, and I saw this opportunity, and I thought this would be a great way for me to do that. So I've worked in all kinds of different areas and fields. Again, law enforcement, I've done work with the Red Cross. I've done work in mentoring programs. So, you know, in terms of my interest, I I'm happy to be used wherever I could be in any of these commissions. So I my the reason I put planning first is just simply I was an economics major, and I loved urban and regional economics. And I loved the town, the idea of working on something that just struck my fancy. But as I said, I'm open to whatever you guys think would be the best way to utilize any of my skill sets. So and I appreciate the opportunity to even have this this chance to talk to you and to work and to benefit the community that we call our home now, that we want to have our family here as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have a question for Mr. Day? No? And I know Ms. Vicaro had said previously some to Mr. Amon, but you know, you you're interested in a bunch of different things, so hopefully we can find a role for you in one of those things, and your chances in some are better than others. So I appreciate you calling in. I know you're out of town and appreciate your willingness to serve. So thank you.
And I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you guys so much. I appreciate all the work you're doing for our town.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, great. So yeah, for for a few of these, I think we know our chances are, but I think for a couple, obviously, council will need to make some decisions tomorrow night. In advance, I'd like to thank everybody who's willing to serve and and volunteer your time. You know, I know how much we all know up here how much time and effort it takes. So we really appreciate that. And as I said, we'll make those decisions tomorrow night. Everybody who's here to interview, you know, you're free to stay for the rest of the meeting, but don't feel don't feel obligated if you don't if you have other things to do. So thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to item five, which is to discuss the use of short-term rental units in the borough of Westchester. Ms. Camper, you gonna take this to start off this thing?
The whole time? The whole time? That's not gonna be easy for me to write, talk, and all that. Anyway, that's okay. So I previously, or in your packet circulated two draft ordinances. One amends your zoning code, which is chapter one twelve of the Borough Code, and the other would amend chapter sixty-six, which is your property maintenance ordinance where you currently have rental rental requirements, rental property registration requirements, excuse me. And it's a two-part amendment, and the first one would define what a short-term rental is. What Dana put out at your at your table today is be underneath the ordinance section, the substantive text amendment is an explanation in yellow highlight of what we're trying to accomplish. And to the extent that there are policy discussions or or decisions that I would want, you know, Kevin and I would want to direct you to, that's what I tried to summarize for you. So the first is just defining what a short-term rental is. One of the things that Kevin and I talked about was, do you want to allow, do you want to require that a short-term rental be a totality of a dwelling unit? So for example, a home, do you have to rent the entire home? Some circumstances or some municipalities allow rental of just individual bedroom units within a dwelling. Kevin and I came to a decision that we think that it's more appropriate to, if you're going to allow the use, to allow the dwelling, the entire dwelling unit being rented on a transient basis. So that's how we've defined it. We would be adding that definition. If if anybody on council, you know, wants to explore something different where you would allow, say, for example, I own a home, and my kids are all off of college, I have three bedrooms that aren't being used, can I lease one one specific bedroom? That is not what this ordinance would accomplish. If that's something that members of council think is appropriate, then obviously we'd have to change that. So I don't know if we wanted me to go through the whole thing and then go back to the discussion items, or if you want to discuss these as we bring them up.
I think it would be helpful to go through. Sorry. Yeah, so.
No, that's great. That's fine. I think you'll see it in its big context. That's fine. Okay, the second thing. Okay, the second is one of the things that you currently have a definition of hotel, and I added that in the yellow brackets. So your current definition of hotel. I just wanted to make it clear that a hotel use where there's multiple bedroom facilities in where you'd come into a common lobby area, sometimes there may be, you know, swimming pools, there might be lounges or restaurant facilities within a hotel. That is a different defined use than a short-term rental. So I didn't feel that your existing definition of hotel was absolutely as clear and concise as it could be to make that distinction, and therefore Kevin and I came up with a different definition for hotel, which is something completely different than a short-term rental of a dwelling unit. So that's what section two accomplishes. Section three would permit this use, the short-term rental use, specifically only in one zoning district, and that's your town center zoning district. And it would require approval from the zoning hearing board through a process that you're familiar with called a special exception. So what any use that you define in your zoning code, there are three ways that council can allow it. A by right use, which is something that the zoning officer has the authority to approve, no action by council or zoning hearing board. Conditional use approval is something that has to come to council for approval after a public hearing process. And a special exception approval is a approval that can only be granted after a public hearing process by the zoning hearing board. We selected town center district, thinking that was where council would feel appropriate, this use would be appropriate. Again, that's a discussion item. There may be a thought that this should be allowed in every zoning district where there's dwellings. That's that's an option, and you surely can do that. We kept it in the town center because currently town center is where you allow hotel uses. And we also put in a special exception requirement because that's what hotels currently today require, a special exception for a new hotel to come in. So we tried to keep that consistent. Section four is the parking space requirements. You currently today, with this being a new defined use, your zoning code would not have a requirement for the parking for this use. What Kevin and I did was view it similar to what the parking requirements would be if a new single-family dwelling was constructed, and it would be it would require two spaces for one new single-family dwelling. They are they have they must be off-street parking spaces. We did speak with Ramsey about this. Kevin and Ramsey, you know, gave input in terms of wanting to make sure that if somebody's permitted to have this use, that they're not, you know, it could be that depending on the number of people that are could stay at the short-term rental, you may have a parking issue with, you know, a problem with parking on the street. So we wanted to make sure that there was parking provided. One of the things that your zoning ordinance does allow, though, for uses within your town center, it does allow that the parking not be on the same exact lot where the short-term rental is. There's a mechanism in, and I cited the section one twelve six oh five, which does allow off-street parking on a different lot in the town center. So we incorporated that same those same standards, so that if I own a property in the town center, I can meet all the requirements for a short-term rental, but I don't have sufficient space to have two two spaces. If my neighbor has extra space on their property, I can make an arrangement with my neighbor and permanently tie up those two spaces on his or her lot to to demonstrate that I have the spaces for my short-term rental. So that was our thought process. Section five is just again, a separate, a new, a brand-new section. It's it would be one twelve dash nine fifteen. That's the next section chronologically where we would add a section, and it's the standards and the criteria. So anytime you allow a use by either special exception or conditional use, the ordinance should define the criteria that an applicant must demonstrate to be entitled to that use. Here, they are basically three things. They're only permitted in the town center. They must comply with the parking provisions, which we just went over. And they have to obtain an annual permit pursuant to chapter sixty-six, which is the second amendment that I've provided to you. The second amendment really has more of the specific criteria that a property has to be able to demonstrate the compliance with in order to obtain a rental permit for a short-term rental. So that's it for the zoning code. The chapter sixty-six amendment, again, what we modeled this on is we tried to use, I took your rental regulations for just renting a dwelling unit in the borough today, cut and pasted them, and then made them specific to registering for a short-term rental. And we made, you know, appropriate edits. We had to add definitions to this new, this will come in. It's a little bit confusing when you go to your chapter sixty-six. So chapter sixty-six is where you, when you, when council adopted the International Property Maintenance Code, which is a code that's published by the International Code Council, that was adopted in two thousand and four, when Borough Council opted into the statewide building code. The property maintenance code is not part of the statewide building code, but most municipalities opted to adopt the International Code Council's version of the property maintenance code. Where that is codified in the Borough Code is chapter sixty-six. The rental property registration requirements, because it deals with property maintenance, we added a new article ten to your chapter sixty-six to deal with your rental regulations. This would add a new article eleven to deal with your rental requirements, your registration requirements for short-term rentals. So that's where this is, this would be found if it was codified and adopted. So it would require anybody who first, the first level would be you'd have to go and get your zoning approval under special exception by the zoning hearing board to have the short-term rental use. You would then follow up and get your rental registration, your annual permit for the short-term rental. The borough would have forms, just like we do today, for rental, registering rental units. We would develop forms that would use to register your short-term rental. That's what section one one zero zero point four calls out. Specific standards are starting on page three. Basically, if the owner does not reside at the short-term rental property, they'd have to designate somebody within fifteen miles to be a designated local agent, basically, so that if there was an emergency that occurred, if Kevin needed to get in touch with somebody, if Ramsey needed to get in touch with somebody, that there was somebody locally that they could reach out to as the designated local agent. Overnight occupancy is limited to no more than two persons per bedroom. Again, that's something that we looked at a lot of other recent amendments to municipal codes across the Commonwealth to get examples of, you know, what's an appropriate number of people that could be staying in as a transient guest in a short-term rental, and that's the number we came up with. Again, those would be something if council wants to change, you know, that's that's up to you. No bedrooms within the short-term rental can contain cooking facilities. No food shall be served to guests. Again, that's sort of to differentiate that you're leasing an entire dwelling unit, you're not having it be an event space where you as the owner are providing a food opportunity through some sort of restaurant facility that differentiates it from a hotel. Guests of the short-term rental cannot occupy overnight any recreational vehicles, campers, or trailers. So if I rent a short-term rental, for example, I think I mentioned to you that when I go to Penn State for football games, I've rented these short-term rentals. If I RV at Penn State for a football game, I would I would not be permitted in the borough to bring my RV, park it on the property, and have additional people stay in that RV. That was something, again, just I don't think the borough is appropriate for that type of a use. You're a much smaller, more urban environment. The next one is that they have to comply with all requirements in your other codes, such as plumbing, building, electrical fire. Occupants of the rental shall not be permitted to sleep outdoors or in tents. There should be no signs identifying the short-term rental. The owner must maintain a guest register and preserve registration records for a minimum of three years. The short the short-term rental must have a clearly visible and legible notice posted within the unit or or adjacent to the front door that has the information that's listed on page four, the name of the owner or the managing company, a nine-one-one address of the property, the maximum number of occupants that are allowed to stay, the maximum number of vehicles that are allowed on the property, the trash and recycling information, and notification to the guests that they may be fined if they fail to adhere to the requirements of the Borough Codes. We brought in the standards. So currently in your rental requirements, you have the concept that landlords are accountable for their tenants' actions, and we carried that similar language over so that the owner of a short-term rental basically has to educate the people that are leasing the short-term rental from them, that if they're engaged in disorderly conduct or some other criminal activity that would violate either a state law or the Borough Code, that 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 can then be used against the owner as far as the regulation of the short-term rental. And then the last one is that the short-term rental may not be used as an event space, and we did add a definition of event space, which is on page two of the proposed amendment, which is a location where a celebration, ceremony, wedding reception, corporate function, or similar activity for the benefit of someone other than the property owner takes place on a periodic basis involving the gathering of individuals assembled for the common purpose of attending the special event. So for example, if somebody could not rent a short-term rental in the borough for purposes of hosting a wedding celebration, that that's not the purpose that you are allowing the short-term rental. It's really for the overnight lodging of transient guests. The other sections, again, really just mirror the provisions for your rental regulations in terms of the fees can be charged to register a short-term rental, and then the enforcement provisions if somebody violates these terms. So I know that was very quick. Happy to go back and start at some of the policy conversations or any comments that council has. And I want to thank Kevin. He worked, you know, hand-in-hand with me and very closely to come up with these regulations.
Wow, thank you. A lot of information there. Thanks for, this is a great first crack at this, I think. A lot of good information here. I'm sure there's questions up here. I had once I had one thing I wanted to ask. I don't, and this came up because I got shared some articles by Ms. Carol. Thank you. One of the things that I I there's been complaints in other municipalities about Airbnbs and Verbos and stuff. And it's the the fact that if the if our municipality, if we wanted to gather data from, say, Airbnb as a company, they don't seem to be a very transparent company if we're looking at stuff. So I don't know if we can compel them. If not, is there a way to to bake into this, you know, something where we we force the owner of the of the property to have to share specific data? And I don't have any specific data points I'm asking about, but if there was.
I'm curious, what is it that you'd be looking for?
So it could be something about like the amount of time, the amount of properties in the borough. So I guess if the registering will know that. So that's one thing that's good. But in terms of like how often they're renting it.
Well, that's in here. So the in the rental registration requirements for an Airbnb or short-term rental, they have to keep a guest register, and the language of the ordinance specifically says that that information must be available for inspection by the borough.
Okay, okay, that's good. And then the other thing was, I know you you I think you sort of mentioned this at the end, failure to adhere to the code, we'd have some kind of consequences. Do we have some kind of an idea what those would be? Are they kind of similar to rentals? I don't know, Kevin, I look like you want to crack a crack at that.
I think I think Kristen said that she was mirroring that language for the disorderly conduct. So if there's a citation that's issued to the property, then we would follow those regulations and assess points to that property, which then could jeopardize their future rental of that Airbnb.
Gotcha. And and I and I there's one other thing about that specifically where I have a feeling, and this is just because it's already happening, where somebody is going to not go through this process and say, oh, I didn't know I need to do this, and then they're gonna come ask for, I guess, I ask for forgiveness later rather than my permission. I I feel like I would want some kind of a something something in here saying, you know, if you go about doing an Airbnb or some short-term rental without going through this process, then you lose the right to do that process in the future. I feel like there should be some kind of a, that should be a consequence of that.
Okay, so two things. So from a zoning perspective, if we find that somebody, if this ordinance is enacted, and we find that somebody is operating or offering their property as a short-term rental without having obtained a special exception, then we are required by the municipality's planning code to issue a notice of zoning violation. And there's very specific requirements what has to be included in that notice of zoning violation. The property owner has thirty days to appeal that notice to the zoning hearing board or to abate the violation. In that instance, the property owner could decide, okay, well, I'm not gonna do it anymore. And then Kevin would have to confirm that that's the case, which that has happened in certain circumstances so far. Or the property owner can appeal to zoning hearing board and apply for the special exception. So the ability to remedy the notice of violation would be to apply for the appropriate zoning relief. If they get the zoning relief then, and they're permitted from a zoning perspective to operate the dwelling as a short-term rental, but they fail to get the rental permit, then there are enforcement mechanisms in your chapter sixty-six. The borough could issue citations and collect fines for violation of your property maintenance code. I think what I heard you say, though, Mike, was that you want if somebody does that, then they revoke the right to have the rental permit?
In some way, yeah, maybe I'm not saying it clearly, but that's that's about it. And I I feel like the the instance I'm thinking of is if we enact this code, and then somebody decides, well, I'll just do it until I get caught. Right? And that could be a long time because it's like Kevin could probably attest, it's not easy to enforce this, right? We don't have the resources to do it as well as people think we do. And then, you know, they're they're operating with that impunity, and eventually they get caught. But they were, I feel like there should be some kind of, I don't know. It bugs me that that could happen, but that's that's what I was thinking. I have I've asked enough questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to first say I appreciate all the work that you guys have done on this. I can tell we've thought through pretty much every single angle I could think of, which is really encouraging to me. And something that I think I should mention as a renter myself is over sixty percent of the borough's residents are renters, according to the last numbers that I checked. The rental market right now is extremely competitive in the borough. I did a little search the other day. I saw we were gonna talk about this, and I could only find a one-bedroom. It's basically like an attic situation, very small, like slope ceilings everywhere, like not super desirable for twelve seventy-five a month. And everything else is like pretty well north of that right now. So I love this community, and I want to be able to stay here. And this, like the idea of Airbnbs being something that as a renter I would have to compete with is something that I struggle with quite a bit. I I understand that it can be more profitable for landlords to rent out by the day. It is a lot more work. But I I would love to stay here, and we all know that home prices have really gone up quite a bit as well. And this is just another thing that it's another way to look at property as investment as opposed to a place to actually live. So I'm just concerned because I'd like the borough to be full of residents who, like all of us in this room, are invested in our communities. And I think disallowing Airbnbs, Airbnbs is a way to make sure that we're meeting that goal. So I really want to say upfront that I appreciate all the work that's been done on this, and I think if council does choose to enact this, I'm breathing a little more easily than I was maybe without any of this stuff in here, especially keeping it to the town center, because that kind of helps us out in NC one and NC two, where a lot of these rentals are, at least that I've seen. But just on principle, I think this is something that we shouldn't expect our residents to have to compete with going forward.
Thank you. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, I have a question about inspections. Since these are gonna be short-term rentals, people are coming out maybe every thirty days or so. Will these short-term rentals be required to have more inspections than a traditional rental property?
As of right now, I think the consensus amongst staff and Kristen is that we would just do it annually. I mean, that would take a tremendous amount. I shouldn't say I don't know how many there are gonna be. I don't know how many we're gonna have if we enact an ordinance. I don't know if there will be a lot that pop up, but to do more than an annual inspection might take additional resources. So that's something we have to evaluate after this comes to fruition, to see how many we actually have. If we have a hundred of them, that might be pretty difficult for our current staff to manage that, along with the other six thousand rental units that we have.
I guess I would ask, what would be your concern in terms of why you would think more than annual inspections would be necessary? Because I was trying to think that through with Kevin. We talked about it.
Right. I mean, I think maybe if there's wear and tear, people coming in and out of.
of the home, any type of situation that, you know, could impact that home or that house through, I mean, I think we've discussed this before about having, if there's going to be short-term rentals, we have people coming in and out, we don't know what's going to change, whereas you have a year-to-year lease, you pretty much know what's happening during that timeframe. Well, at least you should know. The tenant or the landlord, potentially the borough.
We'd have to think through, from a staffing perspective, number one, and then secondly, at what interval, if it's more frequently than annually, then what is the interval? What is the appropriate interval?
Maybe semi-annually. You know, it could be quarterly, I don't know. I mean, that's something that Kevin's going to have to decide.
Yeah, I think, I think Kevin mentioned it earlier, but I think just the resources, that'd be hard to, might be hard for him to actually pull off. But I hear you're saying that, I hear the concern.
Mr. Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. Swan. I got a couple of questions. Ms. Camp, you mentioned that the, the way we're looking at it is that you have to rent the entire building. If you have a attached apartment to the, a building that you, that you live in or that you rent out, can't that second-
Shouldn't have used more clear words. You have to rent the entire dwelling unit. A dwelling unit is a defined term in your zoning code. So it's basically a building that has sleeping arrangements, cooking arrangements. So if you have, in your scenario, if you have an attached dwelling unit, you can rent that dwelling unit as a short-term rental.
And I have to provide two additional parking spots for that. Yeah. And to Mr. McGinnis's point, my family, we do have many Airbnbs, and we have a management team that takes care of the maintenance and the inspections every time somebody goes out. Unlike a hotel, where the staff goes in and checks each room to make sure the smoke detectors weren't tampered with, the ventilators weren't tampered with, they do that in a hotel. The, without having a management team managing each move in and move out, because it could be, you could be there one day or two days, and then the cleaners come in, do the cleaning, and then the management team makes sure it's ready for the next one to be rented. Mr. McGinnis's point, there could be safety damages that could happen if they don't, if the, if the renter for Airbnb doesn't have someone checking their, their safety protocols before everybody moves in, because just say, I make popcorn and the smoke detector goes off, I unplug, take the battery out, because I don't want to listen to it anymore, because I can't figure out how to turn it off, the next people moving in won't have a smoke detector because the battery's out of it. So, you know, someone's not going in and doing a safety check unless you have a proper management team doing it. So more inspections of the Airbnbs or the VRBOs are really important, because, you know, safety, basically. Because the batteries do, it's amazing, we've gone to hard-wire batteries, smoke detectors now, so they stop taking the batteries out, because, you know, they're eight to $10 apiece. So that's a thought process.
Ms. Camp, could you just clarify for me, an apartment dwelling, for example, that has four units in it, they would or would not be able to rent one as a short-term, they'd have, they'd have to do all four?
Four dwelling units, you said. So each of those individual dwelling units, to the extent that they met all the requirements, could be, could receive special exception approval to be utilized as a short-term rental, and to then be registered under Chapter 66 as a short-term rental?
So there could be a mixture of long-term rentals and short-term rentals in the same building?
Right, yeah. And I think the limitation there is going to be the parking. I think that the parking, I'm not familiar with a lot of properties within the borough town center where they're going to have, in your scenario, eight off-street, eight additional off-street parking spaces.
So can you help me under, so I understand new construction to, to parking spaces, but this is, these are existing dwellings?
Or somebody could tear down a building and build a new building that could become a short-term rental. But you're right, for existing buildings today that are dwelling units, you're allowing a new use opportunity. And again, this parking is something that you have the, you have the ability to say, we have two parking garages, you can go park, you know, your tenants of these short-term rentals can go park in the parking garages and walk to the short-term rental. That's your decision. You don't want to make them have to have two off-street parking spaces.
Okay, thank you.
And I know, you know, over the years, parking in the town center for all uses has been discussed, and there's been different, you know, rules of thought on, you know, what's the best way to go about this. At one point, your garages didn't have capacity, and you wanted to encourage uses within your town center. You didn't care if they didn't have parking on lot, you wanted them to use your garages. Whether this use is something that you want to encourage, that is, again, a policy decision.
Just two questions. How does this affect the existing BnBs? Are they grandfathered in? And secondly, since this is a university town, and I heard your caveat regards to events, and a lot of people come in here for graduations, and there might be a spontaneous event at any of these BnBs where families get together and have a post-graduation party, planned or unplanned, you know, that could happen. I just wonder, is that something that a family would have the potential of being targeted or ticketed?
No, so I guess, let me go back on, it is the borough's position today that anybody that's operating a short-term rental in the borough is not in compliance with zoning. And obviously, we have existing case that's pending that deals with that issue. So this ordinance, if it was enacted, we would expect that those property owners come into compliance and obtain, you know, the special exception in order to continue the short-term rental use. They're not, we don't, we don't believe that they're grandfathered. Now, if, if, you know, there's other ways, we can go through a settlement agreement in terms of any specific case, but we're not going to go into that because that's more of a litigation issue. But as far as your point on spontaneous events, I don't think, this wasn't written to prohibit, for example, my children, you know, I rent a short-term rental in the borough, my daughter graduates from Westchester University, and we come back and have, you know, my, my parents and my cousins and whatever to come together. I think of a special event more than something, a pre-planned event, where you're, you know, purposely having and sending invitations out for, you know, a wedding shower, a bridal shower. I mean, I know there's a fine line between the two, but it comes down to that we want them to know in advance, and that these requirements would have to be posted as part of the leasing of the short-term rental, that it's not something that you should be using and you're not permitted to use for the, for the pre-planned purpose of having a special event. But to the extent that, again, somebody legitimately leases it and then comes back for a celebration, you know, something like that, I don't, I'm not sure we can prohibit that. It would have to be, again, it comes down to, and I'll let Kevin chime in on that, I mean, I don't, most zoning violations are only complaint-based, so once we find out about it, we'd have to look at each case by case, but the intention was not to prevent something like that.
Mr. Kara?
Ask about either restricting rental to students and/or placing an age limit on the ability. I know in Tobehana, the age limit is 25. You have to be 25 in order to rent a short-term rental unit in Tobehana Township. I don't know how legal that is, but I know that is in part of their thing. And I know that we have restrictions about renting to students in the apartments in town. Do we have the same restrictions on this?
We did not. A student home is, you know, a defined term, and that's a long-term rental, and students are defined, and that's based on existing case law that was challenged actually and upheld, that you are allowed to treat students as a defined class and have separate zoning restrictions on students. So that, we did not incorporate that into this. I did not research whether that would be lawful to prohibit the occupancy of short-term rental by students. I did not look at that issue. As to whether or not you can require them to be of a certain age, again, I did not specifically look at that. So I'd have to think that through. I don't want to give an answer on the spot without doing a little bit more thought behind it.
Thank you.
Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, just a comment on the short-term rental definition. I wonder if, and some of this perhaps addresses Mr. Allen's concerns, could we limit it to a certain number of days per year, say, you know, 50 or whatever? And then also, it's less than 30, but can we also say it needs to be greater than something, two days or three days?
I think you could do both of those. I think it becomes an issue of enforcement.
And speaking of enforcement, my next question was relative to the parking. How would we actually enforce that?
Complaint-based. Complaint-based, which is how we found out about some of the ones today. Complaint-based about out-of-state parking plates in within, you know, on the street in front of places that were being operated as short-term rentals.
Thank you. And just another comment about the maximum number of days a year. I think that maybe also addresses Mr. McGinnis's concerns about, yeah, the frequency of people coming in and out and how it gets inspected. So if you were to limit it for, you know, a total of 30 days or 50 days, then I think it sort of addresses that, that issue as well.
You're saying that if you're asking if whether, and you're suggesting that maybe something be added, that if you allow the use, you limit the total number of days within a year where somebody can offer their dwelling unit as a short-term rental, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. Again, that's, again, not saying you absolutely can do that. I would ask Kevin on how we'd go about keeping track of that. I mean, again, we'd be basing it off of voluntary compliance by the owner, and that if we, if a neighbor, you know, observed that this is always being used by short-term rentals, there is no timeframe where it's not being turned over by short-term transient guests, and that'd be something you'd have to investigate and enforce.
Yeah, again, it all comes down to enforcement and resources. I mean, it's, we would have to rely on a lot of complaints if that were the case. I'm not saying it's not doable. We could certainly put that language in there, but it would definitely have to, we would have to rely on the neighbors calling us and telling us that they're renting it and they're not supposed to be.
And I would ask you what, what you're trying to achieve there. So any zoning ordinance, if it's going to be challenged as, you know, what's the rational planning purpose? That's what we have to think about. I'd want you to articulate, what is the rational planning purpose for limiting? Not saying you can't do it, I'd want to understand what your purpose is so that we can defend it.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking, you know, from a neighbor's perspective, having it turnover, you know, 150 times, 300 times a year is really bothersome. But I also feel like it would perhaps make people consider the long-term rental as opposed to doing the short-term. If you're only allowed so many days, maybe, you know, it makes more financial management sense to have it as a long-term instead of doing it for that period. So keeping the stock of long-term rentals as opposed to, you know, the short-term.
I guess that comes down to, you know, a policy decision on, do you really want to see this use? And if so, again, you know, recognize you allow hotels in your town center, and your hotels have, you know, every room could turn over every night, you know, thinking of that it's sort of similar to that. It's lodging for transient guests. So, you know, is there more of a concern on the turnover from a dwelling unit in your town center than there would be in something that's utilized as a hotel? Just throwing that out there as a thought.
And remember, this is town center only. We're not going to, they're not going to be permitted, well, currently what we have drafted in the residential zoning districts. I mean, you could have some residential apartments next to a short-term rental, but not a permanent residence for, so, I mean, there's a handful of residential dwelling units in the town center.
Okay.
I have one more question. Is there the ability to limit the number that are permitted in the borough in totality?
Yeah, we talked about that, Kevin and I talked about that, and we were concerned about how, so then it's basically first in and then you're guaranteed, that's it, no one else gets that opportunity. So we were, we shied away from that a little bit, and I'm not saying we can't talk about it some more, but we wanted, we personally talked about it and decided, let's not put that in there. Because again, it felt a little unfair that those that, you know, learn about it and take advantage of it right away are the ones that get to do it. And again, think about the policy, you know, if you're comfortable from a perspective of a policy to allow the use, do you allow it across the board in this one zoning district? Or are you not really that comfortable, but you're allowed, you're allowing it as long as there's only 10? Or you're only comfortable if there's only five? So it's like, you know, at what point are you saying that, well, really not that comfortable?
I think we have something similar related to bed and breakfasts in the borough, right? There can only be so many within a certain radius?
Yeah, I'm not sure of that regulation.
I don't know about that.
Now, one thing yet we have to keep in mind is that if we leave that parking requirement in there, a lot of properties are going to be limited, they're not going to be able to comply with that unless they can get the off-site parking. Town center's pretty tight, there's, I don't know, many areas that have the ability to install two off-street parking spaces. So that's one way that it's going to be, the number's going to be limited.
We're almost prohibiting it, right? I mean, parking is an issue throughout the borough. It doesn't matter whether you're in the town center or Ward 2 or 7, right? And if we're putting additional parking requirements on borough residents that are already tight, we're essentially saying we don't want Airbnbs or short-term rentals in the borough.
I don't necessarily know that's the case.
I mean, we understand that there's parking issues, especially a lot of on-street parking issues. The goal here is to not exacerbate that issue with having these short-term rentals that may have four vehicles showing up for a short-term rental, and they're four parking on the street. So at least we can require two off-street parking spaces for this use that would lessen the burden of the on-street parking.
Yeah, it sounds, I mean, to me, it sounds like we're trying to say yes to this without saying yes. And that kind of brings me to one of my biggest questions around this issue, other than, you know, a little bit extra business downtown, like what is the value add here? And this is very complicated, and I think necessarily complicated, to do this well, but is that worth what value we're adding, especially in light of the fact that we have a whole nother hotel going up right now? So people do have a place to come and visit the borough and spend their money downtown already. We're going to have two hotels for that, and we already have provisions for bread and breakfasts. So I'm, I'm just wondering, what value is worth this complication?
Question. Mr. Flynn?
To follow up on the parking, I have, theoretically, I have a Airbnb right next to a flat lot or a, next to bicentennial parking garage or next to Chester Street parking garage. What would prohibit me from paying for the parking as the owner of the Airbnb and letting them use the flat lot? Because I am providing parking for them, because we know that there's plenty of parking spots on flat lots and the elevator parking. So I charge them an extra $10 a day for parking, and I pick up the parking for them. Is that still considered providing off-street parking?
No, not the way we have it worded now, but I think that is a legitimate thought and scenario that we could add to this. But that's not the way this is worded now. I'd want to tweak this to account for that.
But the question is, and I guess Ramsey would have to weigh in here, how would they, would you be validating their parking ticket that they're getting? Or-
No, what happens is, you know, if you're going to, say you're right next to Chester Street Garage, and I tell my Airbnb that, you know, I'm going to give you, how many days you're there, I'm going to give you a credit on parking your cars over at the Chester Street- Street Garage. Say it's $10 a day. So I'm actually providing parking, but not in theory, I'm providing parking, but in essence, I'm not because it's not designated to my particular house. But it's like where I live on Minor Street, there's big old houses that you could decide to put an Airbnb in and you could park in Lot nine with the kiosk. And I just credit you, you know, when you move out, just like I would credit you if you didn't do any damages, you know, for your for your parking. So I think we need to specifically define that parking has to be on the property because we don't. We got the nice thing about the borough is we have flat lots everywhere in the town center. So that's just a thought.
Okay, I'll ask some public comment on this. If anybody wants to speak to it, come on down. I want to hold our comments about three minutes, though.
Hi, everyone. My name is Krupa Daniel. I live at 26 West Union Street and
Excuse me, could you spell your last name?
Daniel, D A N I E L.
And your address?
26 West Union Street.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Stefano, you had mentioned before a log of the active Airbnbs in the borough that is accessible through the Airbnb law enforcement portal. Government entities have to ask for it. So if you do this log on, you can see a map actually without the exact addresses, but it gives you a good idea of how many units have are currently active in the borough. But you can also get records from at least a decade back showing that this is an ongoing process and there are many rental units available. And if you look at other communities, it is accustomed to allow for short term rentals and Airbnbs in the downtown districts and the town center zoning districts. So I would encourage the council to formally allow something that has already been happening for some time.
Can I ask a question? You said they you contacted Airbnb, but you said they won't tell you where the address is?
They will if you go through the law enforcement portal. But if you go on Airbnb, it gives you a generic map and you can see the intersections and what it's near. So it's very easy to find out the exact neighborhoods that these Airbnbs are in and the density of active listings you have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So it sounds like perhaps you've been on the map.
Yes, yes.
Speaking, how many did you see that are in the borough?
You know, I was able to actually pinpoint the exact addresses, which, you know, may not be wise to mention here for several units. But around my house, I found like 13 units, 13 listings, I think within like a two mile radius. This was a few months ago when I last looked. So it is it is active.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Renee Ryan. I live at 203 East Rosedale. I was actually just looking at the Airbnb app. There are 25 available units right now in the borough. I agree with what Nick said. I would definitely want to see a limit on these. I'm in real estate and I care about my rental clients, just as I care about my homeowner clients. And then I know of a few that are already available and I know that they don't follow all of the guidelines from the proposed ordinance. So I'd wonder how those were handled. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Ms. Carroll?
I guess Ann Carroll, 506 South Franklin Street. I guess what I really want to know is, do we are we required to allow this use?
I don't I would say no. Yeah, and I'm looking at our solicitor. No.
We don't believe that the current law in the Commonwealth is that this has to be a defined use allowed in zoning. You do have to allow transient use overnight transient lodging, which we currently allow in hotels. So no, it's a policy decision for council to make.
And in fact, that would be my concern that we are heading, we've already torn down buildings and therefore we assume the second hotel is actually going up and we have hotel spaces. I just and those hotels frequently rent longer term. I've had people I know who, because they've been put out of their house for fires or other incidents, they go and have a long term stay at hotels. So I think we've answered this need. And I am concerned about the fact that they would have to be very, very tightly controlled. And we don't have enough staff to be able to do that. And that will be an added cost to the borough. The other question I have is if this goes forward, how our hotels and hotel residents have to pay a fee that goes to the county and the tourist industry and to taxes? How is it fair for them to compete with something that doesn't have the same requirements? Thank you.
Ms. Carroll, do you know, does Airbnb charge those fees? Like, do they they don't charge any of these fees? So they essentially, the fees at hotels and taxes they pay.
The tax that she's talking about is a county hotel tax.
That connects that.
Yeah, but that's different.
I'm going to argue with you. I pay hotel use tax on my Airbnbs to the local.
County.
So maybe we should go to Chester County and and have them collect that from Airbnb and similar because it's definitely done in other areas.
In the Kennet Township where we have a Airbnb right next to Longwood Gardens, Kennet Township just charges us $100 a year as a fee, a flat fee to have our Airbnb over there. But the, like I said, we have a management team that goes in after, not just cleaners, it's actually a management team that goes in and checks the Airbnb. And I did check into luxury tax. And I was told that the Commonwealth doesn't want any competition. So because I want to, you know, charge 18% for Airbnbs. But, you know, the Commonwealth told me no, you know, when I when I checked with them. And this Airbnb thing isn't new. You know, for 200 years, people have been renting houses in the Jersey Shore for a week. And and there are a lot of taxes that the owners pay because we rent our properties down the shore. But the but they're not coming in for one day or two days. They're staying for the entire week. And the fire inspector goes through the property down the shore. So there's the building inspector and everything else. And I've even sent Mr. Gore a copy of the the fire inspection that we have to go through in Kalamazoo County. So thank you.
Other comments? All right. So I think at this point, you know, this is a first crack at this. I don't know what the process looks going forward. Ms. Camp, do you know if this is something we take through a committee or?
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I would ask is that, as you've heard, you know, each other's comments, you've heard some comments from the public, if each of you individually want to get back to Kevin and I with some of your thoughts and concerns about the ordinance and things you'd like to see changed, or, you know, hey, I'm in favor of this if we revise it to be A, B, and C and give us that input, we can collaborate and put that together. And then I think the next step, again, I'll talk with Kevin, but I think would be to take it to your planning commission.
Yeah, yeah. We came here to get some policy decision answers. I think we got some more questions out of tonight, which is great. So.
Yeah. And also, I have some questions that I have to answer for you. So I will provide those answers back to you in a memo. And then as I'm working on that, if you can work on your comments, you know, to Kevin and I individually, make sure you send them individually, not reply all, just so this has to be done in a public discussion. And then, you know, based on that, we think we can, you know, hopefully we'll have something that we can then go to the planning commission and get their input on. As any zoning amendment, before you could go to a public hearing, has to be reviewed by your planning commission. So they're a great resource for us to bounce ideas off of. You know, they live in the community. Obviously, they have experience with some things that are going on in their neighborhoods. So that would be a good resource for council. But thank you for your input.
Okay, great. And I would just to close up, I would encourage any anybody listening or here tonight to also reach out to your local, you know, one of your local ward council person and, you know, give them your give them your thoughts on this. Posting it on Nextdoor doesn't count.
And Mr. Stefano, would it be appropriate with this council have any objection? I did bring extra copies if anybody in the audience wants to hear see. I know it was tough. We didn't want to circulate it till we at least had you guys look at it first and give us your comments. So I do have extra copies and I'll put it at the back.
Great. And will that be available online too? Bill, you have that up there somewhere? Okay, cool. Great. Thank you. All right. Great. We're going to move on. That was that was good. We're on item number six, which is an update on Enterprise lease purchasing program. Who's going to tackle this one? Mr. Metric or?
Yeah, I can start this off. I can make it pretty short and simple. Been in a lot of intense conversations the last three plus weeks about decisions made last year, decisions made in the budget and where we how we got to where we are today. So I have a solution moving forward that allows us some space, allows staff some space and some time to reengage enterprise fleet management and give them an opportunity to demonstrate their value, their value add to the borough. We had a conversation in finance committee that brought some of that value into question. So I'd like to have have Enterprise have a chance to make their case from square one with me, with staff. As I mentioned earlier, the best time of year to purchase your vehicles are when your manufacturers are taking orders for those vehicles. So that's generally around August, July, August, and first week of September. So we're going to be right back in this room in about 90 or 100 days talking about vehicles coming along for 2024. And that is going to give me enough time to talk to Enterprise, to investigate the lingering questions I have, give them an opportunity to remake their case that they did with the prior administration as to why there is value in engaging in our fleet management through leasing. But what I'd like to do tonight is roll the two vehicles that we do have in set up for purchase into our existing lease agreement. If we get down the road and we find out that it doesn't have value, we can we can unwind this. This is not a full lifelong commitment to these vehicles or this organization. But with Bernie's help and with Enterprise's assistance, we were able to get these two vehicles that we had budgeted to purchase, sales lease rate quotes for them to fold into our lease program, the two patrol vehicles. So that would be my ask of authorization tonight. And then know that going forward, I will have time and space to have the bigger conversation with with Seth and his team so that we understand what value they're actually providing to the borough. So that's it in a nutshell. So we do have an action item later in tonight's agenda that I'm asking for council support on to move forward with the leasing options.
Okay, so we're not asking for anything on this actual agenda item. It's more just an update and kind of like you're.
Happy to answer any questions. That's kind of a prelude to what's going to come later.
Okay. And I know that you've had some questions recently about the leasing program with Enterprise. And I'm interested to see what, you know, how Enterprise could come, you know, what they come with and what numbers you can come up with and, you know, where we move forward from there. So I'm interested to see all that. Questions about that process going forward? Mr. Allen?
Just for, I guess, my edification, can you explain like the process of, and maybe this would be more appropriate for the later agenda item, but how that is like working more in detail, like how we're rolling that into a lease agreement?
Sure. Essentially, Enterprise is going to pay the pay the vendor of the vehicle for the price of the vehicle and then take that cost and roll it into a lease agreement. So we would then be paying for that vehicle over a five year, 60 month lease term.
Under your current lease agreement.
Correct. Yep.
And maybe this is more, I'm confused how they're making any money on doing that, frankly. Is it, do you have any insight on that? Like how that's profitable for them?
I tell you what, I can I can answer a lot of questions, but that one I can't answer. And Mr. Seth Frankel has agreed to come here, May, the work session to give up give council a full breakdown on the screen on how things work and and where we stand, you know, 18 months into it. So I think all those answers will happen next next month on work session. Have them do their own presentation like they did before.
Are we confident that this decision is not going to add financial burden to the borough as opposed to purchasing?
We'll have a little more time to make that call because I think we need Enterprise's half of the story. I think that the presentation that we did last week where we talked about what it looks like for one vehicle presented a presented a picture that needs to be balanced out. And someone's told me, numbers don't lie. And I do believe believe that to be true. And there has to have there has to be space and time for the counter argument here to make up the difference that we talked about last week.
So if we agree to do this and we find out that it's not financially advantageous for us, you said this can be unwound. Does that mean we can't lose in this situation then? Because we'll have done our homework by then and we will have lost nothing in the meantime? Or like?
Unwinding it means that when vehicles come to their lease term, and let's say we have, we currently have 15 vehicles, when they come to their lease term, maybe you renew for seven or eight vehicles and the sales of those seven or eight vehicles that you're retiring get credited back to your future lease payments of the remaining. So there's ways to there's ways to move away from Enterprise's lease arrangement. There's a way there's a way there's a clear path on how to how to dive deeper, right, to invest more into that.
Okay, thank you.
Just so for everyone's, pardon me, but for everyone listening, we have 15 vehicles in our lease agreement. We have 77 lease eligible vehicles in our fleet. That number probably should come down a little bit just from internal consolidation. We should be managing our fleets a little bit differently. So let's call it 75 or 70 vehicles, somewhere in that range. So we are just about 20 to 25% into the relationship at this point.
And my question would be that these two vehicles you're talking about rolling into the lease, would they be treated differently at the end of the lease? Would we then own these? So we're leasing them. But in fact, it would be the same as if we had taken out a note instead of paid outright for them, we're paying monthly. Will we own these two vehicles at the end of five years? Or do we have to worry about the what they want at the end on the other end?
At the end of five year, all of our lease terms right now are 60 months, so five years. At the end of five years, we don't own the vehicles.
So these two as well?
Correct. That's not how those leases are structured. At the end of the lease term, there's a reduced book value, which is the depreciated value of the of the vehicle and you pay that depreciation. Then the vehicle is sold. You can sell it yourself. You can, excuse me, you can sell it through Enterprise's network and you get a credit back through their sales network less the reduced book value that's remaining on your lease. For police vehicles, police vehicles, when they get to the end of their lease terms are for all intents and purposes, fully depreciated. The reduced, excuse me, the reduced book value on these two vehicles is $420. The upfront capitalized price of these vehicles is about $42,000. So at the end of the lease, they're selling that they're selling that vehicle for you. They charge you $400 to sell the vehicle. You pay $420 to Enterprise. But the rest of that value should go back in the form of a credit into your next lease. I'm pretty confident that's what's going to happen, even though we haven't been through a sale with Enterprise yet. But again, I think this, what what appeals to me about this course of action is it gives a little bit of breathing room and some space and time for us to continue to investigate it and learn and have Enterprise and answer some of these questions that we raised.
Thank you. I'll give you two couple quotes from a couple of people that that work here in the borough. The first one is our fleet. in the borough. The first one is our fleet manager, James Barnes. He said, "This is an excellent opportunity to replace a large sum of vehicles for a fraction of what it would cost to purchase vehicles." That's a quote. Lieutenant Josh Lee believes it makes sense long-term to enter into this agreement. He also believes recycling vehicles is a good idea as older vehicles do not currently have, the current police vehicles don't have the features, safety features such as backup cameras and other side impact information. To add to Mr. Metric's statement, 18 months ago, the borough entered into an agreement with Enterprise Leasing to assist us in bringing our fleet of vehicles into a safe, sustainable operation. Enterprise evaluated our entire fleet and made strategic recommendations to move with hybrid and electric vehicles to combat global warming. In 18 months, we've leased 15 vehicles, and if we drop these two police vehicles into the portfolio, we will have successively replaced 17 cars or trucks. That's one car a month, which is unheard of. There are still very important things that we gotta remember, very, very important. We still have eight police vehicles that are in desperate need of replacing. We really don't need to replace staff vehicles that often. Mr. Metric and I talked about it. Instead of five years, maybe seven, maybe nine years for staff cars, but police cars must be replaced every five years because of the wear and tear. Enterprise has done everything that they said they would do to this date, and there have been no issues with service, pricing, commitment to Westchester Borough. And to Mr. Metric's point, it makes good sense to stay the course until we're proven otherwise differently.
Thank you.
I, you know, I will repeat what, I think this is a dollars and cents question, right? If I can repeat what Mr. Metric said, you know, numbers don't lie. One and one always equals two. And this is a financial decision that the borough needs to make long-term. This is a strategic decision that we're making around purchasing vehicles. So we entered into a contract 18 months ago, and I think, given some of the information that has come to light, we need to reevaluate if that is the best path forward, based solely on, well, I won't say solely, but primarily on numbers. This is what, that's what it comes down to, dollars and cents.
Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to the conversation that we have about this. I'm not convinced that this is the best way or maybe not the best way for all the vehicles. I mean, just the police vehicles, the fact that Dirk fully depreciated, we're paying for that. I mean, unlike a normal lease, we are paying for the entire vehicle over the course of the 60 months, plus the financing charge, essentially. So we don't own anything at the end, so I just, I think it's worth a look at. So I'm looking forward to your evaluation.
Okay. All right. Any public comment on this? Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to item, we are now under our committee action items. For all of these, as we move ahead, anything that we, the committee will put on consent agenda for tomorrow night or for discussion for tomorrow night, or we take it away if we don't need to? Okay, so item seven is approve a resolution supporting the Westchester Food Cooperative. There isn't an attachment for this. This is a resolution. Does anybody wanna speak? You guys wanna speak to this and just kinda give your quick spiel on it?
Hello, I'm Tim Drake, board member with Westchester Cooperative.
Renee Ryan, president of the Westchester Cooperative.
Just wanna make yourselves available to answer any questions or clarify anything.
And just to declare, you know, for everybody here, this is just a resolution in support of their efforts moving forward. Do you have any questions for that?
No, but I believe this should be put on the consent agenda.
Okay, all right. Looks like no questions and we're gonna put it on a consent for tomorrow night, so you're good to go.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it nearly came up as a non-binding support for what we're trying to accomplish in the borough, so.
Yeah, great. I appreciate your efforts and-
Appreciate it.
Of course, yeah. Any comments from anybody on this? All right, that'll go on our consent for tomorrow night. Item eight is approve a resolution to shred parking and administrative documents. I'm assuming this is pretty routine, old documents that we get rid of?
It's going, my understanding is it's going to be routine. We're currently housing all of this data and information on our servers, which is costing us money. According to state law, we're not required to hang on to these documents as long as we are, so we're just getting into the routine of doing that. My only question about this is, do we have to do this like every year when we actually go to shred? Okay, great. So that, yeah, this will be a routine moving forward.
Mr. Stefano, it says here for administration, basically shredding of parking and administrative documents. Years ago, well, not years ago, pre-COVID, I gotta always say pre-COVID now. The sustainability team always had a community shredding for residents. Could that be added to this?
I don't know because these are probably sensitive materials, but I'm not quite sure about that. Anybody think they have an answer for that at this point?
It's just the borough, well, maybe we just should probably do just the borough now and have the sustainability manager plan a yearly residential like we used to do?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. I know, I'm just thinking, you know, personally working in a school district and we have specific documents that have sensitive information. We have like a service that comes to do it specifically. We don't like take it somewhere because sensitive materials, you know, confidential stuff.
Yeah, we used to have a yearly thing here, but we haven't had it since COVID, I think, so.
I think it's worth looking into.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Are we consent on this? Comments, anybody? All right, that'll go on consent. Moving on to item nine, approve the open air market rules and regulations. I looked over these. They're pretty much the same as last year, if I'm correct. There was one thing, and I always think about it because it's something I do, but when it came to, if you could go to the bottom, there was something about live music. I think it's all the way at the bottom. I know you guys are like, oh, you're talking about live music. But the heck is it? It's farther there. Music Entertainment, it doesn't mention a stopping time, and I'm sure that the neighbors would appreciate that. And I feel like in previous years, we had made it 10:00 PM, but I could be wrong. 10:00 PM. Cause I know that you have to stop commerce at 11:00 PM, if I'm correct, earlier in the document, but it doesn't mention that. And I don't, I feel like it would be appropriate to add that in there up until 10:00 PM.
I can add that the noise ordinance is 9:00 PM, but I believe you are correct. I believe 10:00 PM was what we had said last year. I mean, it is, it's-
I hope so, cause I played till 10.
Market that can be quite loud, so that could be appropriate.
Yeah, cause if not, I think you could interpret it based on this document that it's until commerce is concluded at 11:00 PM. So I feel like it should be specific and say 10:00 PM. Does anybody-
I'll make a motion to amend to make it 10:00 PM.
I'll second that.
Okay, we, motion to second to make an amendment to this document. Do we vote on that right now and then they could, just for the change, correct? That's Robert's. Yes, go ahead, Ramsey.
It says parking vouchers, and I guess that used to be-
Go back down.
All right. There, I guess bid used to allow for parking vouchers. I don't think we have the capacity to do that right now, so John O'Brien agreed that we just remove that from this for now. I know we will have that opportunity once we upgrade the entry and exits at the garages.
Okay, any chance my, we could, the motion to second, would you two agree to also add in there the taking away of the language about parking vouchers?
Yes, sure.
Okay, good. So we have a motion to second to make those two changes in this document. We call a question right now and then just to change this, correct?
Yeah, you can call the question, or you can have me call the role, or you can say, does anyone object, since it's a minor thing, but we could, I could call the question.
Let's just, let's just vote on it. Let's just vote on the change. So any for discussion before we vote on that? Anybody else have anything else they wanted to? Okay, so Mr. Metric, would you call the question?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Vicaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
President Stefano?
Yes. Okay, so the motion carries 7-0 to make those changes. And now with those changes, we have any other comments on this or discussion? Are we good to put this on consent?
Consent.
Okay, any comments from anybody on this?
Mr. Stefano, if I can add one thing in the same, not related to those rules and regulations, however, it is in the same vein as the outdoor dining. Last week at the Smart Growth Committee meeting, we had discussed the dining platforms. I had given an update to the Smart Growth Committee regarding PennDOT regulations surrounding those platforms. I had a chance today to speak with PennDOT, and they had advised me that the new process that PennDOT, and this is, and it's an evolving process because it's all new for PennDOT, but the outdoor dining platforms, they call them these parkettes, the borough, if it's a platform on a state highway, the borough is required to apply on behalf of the business owner. We have to submit the application. It'll then go through a review by PennDOT, but it also has to be reviewed by the Federal Highway Administration, much like the Gay Street closure was in the past.
This is for all the platform dining?
So right now, it'll only be for, we have control of Gay Street, so those don't matter anymore. But the ones on Market Street, currently there's only one on Market Street, but there is another one who wants to apply on Market Street. So new and existing would have to go through this process, and there's no guarantee that it's gonna be approved, is what they said to me.
Wow.
An extremely lengthy process.
Well-
And again, the borough could be taking on increased liability on, you know, by submitting this application if something were to happen. But the federal highway review is not a quick process.
So what are we doing already at this moment about this? Cause they're currently, they're, those businesses are probably gonna wanna open up in the next month if they're not already operating.
Already, the one that's been approved in the past is out there. It's down. That is gonna have to come up for a couple of months while they restore the paving on Market Street. But the new one that they've submitted an application for, we haven't taken any action on it until we've gotten, one, some information from PennDOT, and two, direction from Borough Council on how we want to handle this.
Yeah, and I would assume that this is gonna incur costs. I mean, we have our staff now working on this. There's gonna, we're gonna have to up fees, correct? I mean, that's not a deal, but what do you, like, you're-
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, interesting. Yeah, Mr. Edwards, going now.
Don Edwards, Public Works. We have something similar, and something's gonna be coming to council pretty soon. PennDOT's been requiring us to apply for permits for plumbers who are doing water or sewer work in state roads, and I got real uncomfortable with that for the reason that Kevin mentioned about the liability. You know, if we're saying he's gonna do one thing and he ends up doing something else, then, you know, we're on the hook for it. So anyway, been working with Solicitor, and we have a draft ordinance. This applies to just utilities, just sewer, but I think we have a plan, and there is no cost for the permit application for us.
Okay, interesting. I wonder if the, are these all new regulations or just things they're not enforcing?
It's real, I'd like a crack at this if I could, cause I've been dealing with this longer. It's not, nothing, this is coming from PennDOT. I wouldn't say it's any regulation. Yeah, so it's what they want us to do.
Regulations regarding the parking spot occupation for the platforms, that is new. That is something that PennDOT had developed in response to COVID because everybody was putting these platforms out there. Obviously, things have calmed down a little bit and they're not, I don't think there's as many of them out there. Now, we had our regulations pre-COVID. Those platforms were well prior to that, and it was something that really a blind eye was turned to by PennDOT. And, but now they want these applications submitted for these platforms. And I can't say how long it's gonna take for them to go through that review process.
All right, well, we're gonna need some kind of an answer on terms of what we need to charge the fee and how we're gonna go about this ASAP, I guess, right? And you just found out today, you said, right? So, and you know, things gonna have to wait. It's probably gonna be next month till we get this in front of us again, but that's not our, nothing to do about that, so.
So the exist-
Okay, good.
So the existing one on Market Street, there is one, you said, correct?
Yes.
So right now, that's, would have to be put on pause. Is that an accurate statement?
They would, they, according to PennDOT, the existing ones have to go through this process as well. I mean, we've already approved their outdoor dining permit because, you know, we didn't, we weren't aware that they would be subject to this as well. I mean, I would say it's just gonna stay there until if they were to apply for this, then see what happens. If they don't wanna apply for it, if they don't want to go through the process or have the borough go through the process, then I would think it's gonna have to be removed from the road.
So I think I heard you say that it would be up to the borough to apply for it, and we have to shoulder that responsibility.
Yeah.
Did I hear you say that?
Yes.
So right now, unless the borough does not apply for it, we would just have to return their fee and ask them to take up their parkette. Is that what it's called?
Yeah, we call them dining platforms, but-
Dining platforms. So at this point, they should not and could not use that until the borough makes a decision whether they're going to apply or not apply. Would that be an accurate statement?
Well, again, the one that's there, we've allowed them to put that down. Under the past rules, yes. So until, until a decision is made, I think they can use it and leave it there. But as a, that's a good question. I don't know. I mean, currently, under our regulations that we have now, we require them to submit a, and sign an indemnification agreement, holding the borough harmless. So I would think that that would cover us for now.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Gore, the, I think the overall answer question is, when did PennDOT say that this goes into effect? Does it say immediately, 30 days? They have to give us a time when they want us to start enforcing this thing. It's already been in effect. Then they should have to take their platform up. We give back their money, prorate their parking money. I personally don't feel comfortable, you know, being a representative of the borough, taking on the responsibility of a restaurant owner. And then that conversation could happen, you know? I don't know how the rest of council feels, but PennDOT says it has to come up now, and we rebate the restaurant, prorate the restaurant with the money that we owe them, and then just let them tell you whether they're interested in us going forward, or whether the borough ever wants to get involved with it either. Cause then it puts us as a liability in the first position, so.
I feel, I feel like, I think we, I'd like some more answers from Solicitor before we make that decision, but I hear you, I hear you, Bernie. And I feel like going forward, if at the end of the day, we are liable, if we go through that process, that might be a decision that council's gonna have to make, whether we're willing to take that, take that on.
Yeah, the PennDOT representative did say it's quite a burden, and people aren't gonna go through the process. They're either gonna put them down and not go through the process, or the municipalities are just not gonna allow them, that they're not gonna submit the applications on their behalf.
Yeah.
And then the length of time for the federal review is just outrageous.
I mean, we know how long they take. Look at the Gay Street, it took forever. Yeah, Mr. Vicaro, then we do the-
One quick question. If-
If, if a state highway runs through our town, are we required to allow parking on either side? What, if these were to become permanent rather than things that we take up and down, would that negate this whole process? And is that possible?
If there was no parking there and then the sidewalk was larger, it would just be sidewalk dining that we allow all over town.
And could we have that conversation with Mercado and discuss the cost of that versus the, the procedure that we're about to offer them?
You have the parking director sitting next to me, I think that's going to be an evaluation on how much revenue you're going to lose on meters.
Do you need a traffic study to increase this, like, to change the sidewalk layout?
We, we actually, our prior traffic engineer did a, um, did a conceptual design for Market Street from New to Church, and they called it a road diet, shrinking that down a little bit. And not having it as wide where we had that turning lane on to, um, Church Street. So there are ideas there. But again, I think there's, there's a lot of variables that would need to be considered if that was going to be done.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comment on that? All right, so we're still under nine, so that we moved that open air market rules and regulations with the changes to consent. We're now moving on to item 10, which is schedule a public hearing date for transfer of liquor license, nine North High Street, nine prime, uh, May 15th, for May 15th of 2023, so next month. Is that date work for everybody? Do we need to get into the details of the liquor transfer at this point? Be just the overview of what it is.
That date's on a Monday, just to let you, let everyone know because of the Tuesday primary.
Are we good with that date? I mean, it makes sense, I think, just the, the whole discussion.
I'm for putting it on consent.
Okay. Any comments on that? All right, that'll be under consent for the 15th for that public hearing. We're going to move on to item 11, which is authorize the solicitor to prepare an amendment, chapter 104 titled Vehicles and Traffic, section 104-32, to revise no parking at certain times on New Street between Minor and Market Streets and schedule a public hearing date on May 17th of 2023. Now, hold on, seven, so how's the meeting schedules working next month that I'm confused about? We have Monday for the 15th.
Yeah, you have the primary on Tuesday.
Okay, so Tuesday's meeting is on Monday, but Wednesday's still Wednesday, I got it, okay. Understood. Any questions about this, does that date work for everybody? I feel like that makes sense. Okay, so that'll be consent. Unless there's a comment on that. All right, uh, item 12 is approve the sale of the following items on municipal bid. There's North Star air compressor, Subaru generator, a drum containment and dispensing system, and a 2015 Nissan Altima. This seems pretty routine stuff that we do to bid out stuff. Any comments on this or are we good for consent? Okay, comments on that? Daryl's looking up for that Nissan Altima, I see him writing it down. All right, 12 is under consent. 13, approve the Weaver Mulch Snyder Avenue lease agreement. What is this for?
Mr. Edwards, I don't know if you want to speak to, to this.
Weaver Mulch has been, Weaver Mulch has been, um, operating on our Snyder Avenue property and, um, and I think they've been doing it for, since 2014. And what they do is they take our yard waste, they shred it and they turn it into mulch. And, um, the first agreement was about 2014, it's time to renew. And, um, the, the one thing that I do want to add was between committee and here, we changed the amount of free mulch from 30 cubic yards to 60 cubic yards. So I was told that that needs to be mentioned here.
Okay. That makes sense. I feel like all the capital letters, just maybe confused about what that was, that makes sense. Weaver Mulch is the company for Snyder, I got it. Any comments on this? Are we good for consent? Okay, any comments from anybody on that? All right, 13 is consent. 14, approve amendment to liquid fuels eligible roads in, uh, in the borough. What do we, what are we changing here?
So we did an in-depth dive into liquid fuel standards and those are roadway standards. And if qualifying, if a roadway in your municipality qualifies, it gets put into the formula that calculates your liquid fuels distribution, which happens around this time of year. So we did a deep dive and credit to everybody involved on our team to figuring this out because we found some more eligible roads, which means more revenue, which means more roads can get paved in the future.
Okay, that makes sense. Comments on this? We good for consent on this one? Any comments from anybody out there? Okay. 14 is consent. Under the Parking Committee, we have 15, discuss parking, permit parking relative to the 410 South High Street Land Development Project. What's our, what's, Ramsey, you want to lead this off?
So knowing that the Burger King property is going to be developed into, I think it's 125 units. And knowing that there's a concern about the amount of on-street residential permit parking, my recommendation to the Parking Committee was that we would exclude this land development plan from allowing to be included in the residential permit parking. And I know that sounds harsh, but I do think that if these land developers are, are following zoning and they're saying that they're providing the necessary parking for their residents and they can market it from the beginning. Kristin Camp recommended that we ask for it to be included on the land development plan as a note as well. But this might be one step in the right direction to looking at parking comprehensively for the borough.
Yeah, do you, what's the number of planned apartments at this point? Do you know the number of units?
125.
125, was it? Yeah, I feel like, oh, man. They're going to, they're going to add, they have to add in their development, okay. Yeah, I feel like that makes sense to, to exclude them. I feel like it's, it's unnecessary, it's necessary, I mean, for that area. Is this, so this will be an action to make that in the land development as a, something in our, in the land about from the, our side, right? Agreement, right? That's what this item is, you're asking us right now, or is this just discussion?
Yes, and then I'll modify the chapter 77 to name it in there, similar to, I think, Washington Street and Waverly were also excluded.
Comments on that from up here?
I, I just want to make note that this would not be the first apartment building that we are doing this to. This has been done to other buildings.
Okay. So are we consent on this? If comments from anybody on this? All right, so consent to, to make that change in, in the.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll ensure that that comment is incorporated into their land development and plan.
Got it, okay. Good, so 15 is consent. 16, under public safety, direct the solicitor to prepare an amendment to add two alternates to the Civil Service Commission. Chapter 3-37, K, two administrative boards and commissions. Mr. Dorsey?
So, and I'll ask Chief Morehead to keep me honest here. Right now, we've got three, um, members on the Civil Service Commission, two of which who have expressed a desire to step down, one is going to step down. And the other one this year, the other one, uh, next year. So we have Mr. Chapman, who I think we appointed last year. This would, um, allow us to have two alternates with these two gentlemen stepping down, so we would remain at three. Another option that we discussed is just increasing the number to five. I don't know if that's a possibility, but, you know, it's been the same three. Mr. Polito and Mr. Davis have probably been on the Civil Service Commission for 50 years. It might be a good idea to, uh, have some new, uh, members on that commit, committee.
And I, I just feel like everything with civil service is like regulated outside of us. So we have the ability to do that, we, we have the ability to expand the number of Civil Service Commission members, right?
In an ordinance, correct.
Okay, all right. But for now, two alternates, and then we can look at adding into the future. I think that makes sense, knowing that's coming up. I know how important that, that position, those positions are to have somebody ready to go in case people do step down or have to leave for any reason. So, um, I'm in favor of it. We, anybody have comments on this or? Okay, we'll put this on consent. Anybody out there have a comment on this? Okay, 16 is consent. 17, approve a resolution to update the 2023 Westchester Emergency Operations Plan. This is usually pretty routine with just updating names and stuff, right? Any comments on this? We good for consent? Comments from the public? All right, so that 17 will go under consent? 18, under Smart Growth, consider solicitor attendance for zoning appeal, uh, number 1001 of 127 East Neil Street. The applicant seeks relief from section 112-602D to allow for off-street parking at 97-271C, which requires the edge of any driveway opening onto a street to be at least 40 feet from the nearest end of the paving radius, radius at a street intersection. The committee did recommend no solicitor representation for this. Mr. Gore, anything you wanted to add to that in terms of?
No, I mean, this is, it's a fairly simplistic dimensional variance. And it's on an alley at the intersection of actually two alleys. But the zoning hearing board will review that and sure, we can offer some safety improvements there as well.
May I ask you a question? Is this the alley where, uh, a neighbor does not want them to use the alley? They put the pad in the back so that they could have?
No.
That's not the same one? You know which one I'm?
Yes, I do know, yes.
Because they were here earlier and I guess they had to leave. That, that's, is that one here that I missed?
No, that is, they, they have not come to us for any type of relief. Nor do I know that they need any relief, but no, this is not it.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so are we good with not sending a solicitor? Does anybody feel differently, strongly the other way?
Consent.
All right, so we'll just, um, since we're not going to send a solicitor, we don't need to put this on for tomorrow night. So, uh, item 18 could be, I feel like I need a word stricken from the agenda, I don't know, does that work? Okay, all right, struck from the agenda, all right. Item 19 is, uh, consider solicitor attendance for zoning appeal, uh, number 1002 of 111 South Poplar Street. The applicant seeks relief from section 112-304A to allow for use of the residential parcel for agricultural use as the principal use on a vacant lot. This was also 30 for no solicitor representation. I know I had received some information about this via email from the owners. Anything else you want to add to this, Mr. Gore?
No, again, it's fairly, fairly simplistic, low impact. The, this is a vacant parcel. There's no principal use there currently. It's in a residential zoning district, they want to put a community garden in there. Unfortunately, they have to go through this process to get relief to have the principal use as a agricultural use, we'll call it.
Okay, uh, I'm, I'm also in favor of not sending a solicitor at this point. Anybody feel strongly differently? All right, so we will also struck, strike this from the, um, the agenda for tomorrow. Okay, uh, I don't, well, no, we're just not going to send anybody to represent on our behalf at the zone. They still have to go through the zoning hearing process, but we're not sending anybody to represent us. Item 12, 20 is to approve the retail alcohol agreement with Hopf Adity LLC. This was a committee recommended 30. I don't know anything about this.
I mean, it's, it's just standard with our breweries in the borough. If you want to elaborate more, Kevin, but.
Yeah, we, we have a handful of brewery licenses in the borough. Several years ago, we tried to appeal to the state to not approve them. But that was, there was no avail. These are not like a standard liquor license where they go through a transfer and we have a hearing. So we have come up with this standard agreement for all of these brewery licenses. And we asked that the, um, business owner enter into this voluntary agreement to, so we have some type of regulation over these breweries, whether, you know, outside sales, time of sales, things of that nature. So all of them have done that and this is just the latest one.
Yeah, I, I'm familiar with that agreement now that you say that, I just didn't realize this was a thing, so, happening. 121, oh, yes, I know, okay. Okay, any have issues with this agreement? All right, so that can go under consent, any comment from anybody? Okay, 20 is under consent. 21 is our Harv approvals. There's A, B, and C. As I usually do, I don't need to go through all three of them unless there's something, um, that was of a concern. Mr. McGinnis, anything in any three of these that?
No, I mean, these were, uh, standard signs, uh, for the most part with recommendations. The one with the limoncello, uh, there is obviously a little bit more recommendations. And that's for the, um, the new, uh, building that they purchased that's connected to, uh, the existing restaurant.
Yeah, and I, you know, the, the committee recommended them 30 and the Harvs made the recommendations. So, uh, I, I don't think we need to go through all three of them. Anybody have any issues with these three? All right, so we'll consent to, uh, 21, A, B, and C, uh, for tomorrow night. Any comments from anybody on these? Okay, uh, and then item 22, under Finance, is approve the 2022-23 Capital Program Reconciliation, not completed and budgeted.
So, yeah, this is all, all Harvs coming up, projects that were meant to be completed last year, but kind of bled into this year.
We, um, we have three projects that we had budgeted for in the 22 budget. Those, those three projects were Green Lake Go, High Street, and an AC unit, uh, for the wastewater treatment plant. The total of these, those three projects was about $1.2 million. The way the budget process works, um, any projects that will not be completed should be included in the following year's budget. We thought that they would be completed by the end of '22, but they weren't. So our ask tonight is to include these in the 2023 budget. Although, again, since they weren't budgeted, we're asking for that, um, that they be included. And we did have enough cash at year end, um, uh, to pay for these projects.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Anybody have any issues with that? All right, so this will be under consent unless there's some comment from out the public, and there's not. So 22 is consent. 23, we have approval of the following purchases. A is approve purchase of a dump truck, uh, from the Public Works Department. Um, and then B is approve purchase order and payment for two patrol vehicles, uh, Police Department, which I know that Mr. Metrick had mentioned earlier. We are going to, we can still allow that, are we still allowed to use that language that's in there? Since it's going into the enterprise lease agreement, do we have to change that?
Yeah, we can still use this language, but I'd like council to have the lease rate quotes that I received today. So if you don't mind them.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Oh, you're right. Is it 9%? Is it nine percent? This is for all of the vehicles or one of the vehicles?
This is for two, to the two patrol vehicles.
Two patrol.
Yeah, it's basically to put those two, two patrol vehicles into our lease agreement. I believe one monthly payment is about eight hundred eighty-eight, the other one is eight hundred ninety and change.
I understand it's, it's two, okay. Are they different vehicles?
They're both, they're both base all-wheel-drive police interceptors with six-cylinder engines and hybrid drivetrains.
Okay. All right, I think I get it. All right, so this is the quote. This is, anything else we need to know about this information? This is just, just want to make sure we have the information there. Okay, all right, cool. So once again, this, the language that's in twenty-three will accommodate for the enterprise to make that. Okay, understood, okay. Any questions about this information or twenty-three, which is the approval of these, these vehicles for A and B? Mr. Allen?
Can we just put this on discussion so I can read this tonight?
Okay, twenty-three will go on discussion for tomorrow night. Does anybody else want to add anything real quickly while we're moving on? Okay, so twenty-three will go on discussion tomorrow. Twenty-four, approve Chester County CRP grant resolution for the Gay Street Open Air Marketplace. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, again.
A, we have to figure out how we're going to pay for A.
Oh, so we're still in twenty-three, okay, sorry.
That's sitting in the capital projects bucket, I believe, the dump truck.
Is that, was that budgeted for?
It was in the, the money was in the capital projects bucket and talked about for any funds left over from the Joe Biden money, the art money that we were going to spend on, on frugally, you know, buying things that we need, so.
The eighties, it was budgeted in 2023 using the ARPA.
So what do we need, we need, like, do we not have the money right now to purchase that vehicle?
No, we have the money.
No, the money's, the money's already in the pot, the capital projects pot. And, but we have, since we're going to buy out of the capital project dump truck, we have to approve that to come out of the capital project bucket because it's more than ten thousand dollars. And then the two police cars tomorrow will be dropped into the enterprise leasing thing, so they're bifurcated, so the two are different.
Understood, that's why I asked Mr. Metric, so we get, do we need to change the language here? Or is this, I feel like, that's why I asked that earlier, like, the language doesn't cover for what Mr. Flynn's talking about?
I, I think it does. If it makes council more comfortable, you could, you could word it saying approve entering in a lease agreement for two patrol vehicles.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. That would make me feel better if I, we change that. So with the, I mean, we're going to discuss it tomorrow night anyway, but let's change that for tomorrow night to say, how do we want to word it? Enter in the lease, the enterprise lease agreement for these two patrol vehicles? Does that make sense? Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll still discuss that tomorrow night, but at the next, okay, all right.
So, so in reference to the dump truck though, I thought all the capital money that we got through Joe Biden, we had to now use for our roof because our roof is in need of it. So I thought all that excess was going to our roof. So you're now saying we now have additional for the dump truck?
No, in our 2023 budget, we had total capital projects in our general fund totaling eight hundred thousand dollars. This dump truck was a part of that, and it's under the Public Works Capital Budget Line item. The reason why this is on the agenda tonight is because as part of the purchasing policy, items over ten thousand dollars must come before Borough Council. And we wanted to make sure that we were in compliance with that. So we're just asking for the approval to purchase this dump truck.
So to that, to your statement on, in the budget was also included the purchase of two vehicles.
That's correct.
They're over ten thousand dollars, and now you're switching from purchasing them to leasing them. And so I'm just wondering why you're approving the dump truck, but not the two vehicles?
The dump trucks can't be purchased through the enterprise contract. They only cover, you know, smaller type vehicles. These kind, this kind of equipment can't be purchased through enterprise.
Understood, but it's still the same premise. And my only other question is, I thought I heard this money was coming out of, to Mr. Flynn's statement, Biden money.
It is, that's correct.
So it's not, it was really not part of our budget money, but part of that money, which we're using a good portion, if not all of it, and adding to it for our roof.
No, so this was when we did the budget, all of our capital projects in our general fund, you'll see it. I believe it's on page two. There's about eight, an approximate number of eight hundred thousand dollars. Our plan was to use the ARPA money that we've already have, and that was to go to pay for all of these capital projects. So the police vehicles, the dump truck. There's a whole list of things. There's computer upgrades, all sorts of things that all of the different departments needed. That was already in the budget. The reason why we put this on tonight is just to follow the policy because the policy does state anything over ten thousand dollars does need approval. Even though it was in the budget, we're just trying to be, you know, in compliance with our policy.
So what you, what I heard you just say was the two police vehicles were in that AARP?
Yes, they were.
And so they were budgeted?
Yes, they were.
Including the dump truck, but not the two police vehicles?
That were, the two police vehicles were originally supposed to be paid from the ARPA money that we had in our budget. That is correct. But, you know, we did have an enterprise leasing contract that was already in place. And I know that, you know, the decision has been ba, been made now to use that contract that is in place to purchase these vehicles. So that would free up some of this ARPA money.
So I guess my only real question is, if the money for the two vehicles were budgeted in the AARP money, I might be making it senior citizen group money. But if it was already budgeted, along with the dump truck, we're getting the dump truck. We have the money budgeted. So the question, the cars are there for purchase. You said the numbers don't lie, that it was more of a cost savings to purchase them as opposed to leasing them. We leased them for five years. At the end of five years, we have nothing. We paid for two police vehicles that we have, it's like renting them for five years. And we have no, nothing to show for after five years except going on that hamster wheel again. Why aren't we purchasing them with the AA, with the Biden money? With the, yeah, with the Biden money. I, I guess, I, I think that is what we really need to look at doing. And so I think that's a question up for discussion.
Yeah, and we're going to discuss that tomorrow night. Yeah, so we're going, this is all going to be discussed tomorrow night. So I'm going to stop the discussion now. All right, cool. All right, so any other, no, no more discussion. Twenty-four. Twenty-four is approve Chester County CRP grant resolution for the Gay Street Open Air Marketplace Phase One Project. Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to this for just one minute, as there's been a change to this since the Finance Committee approved it last week. But this is a grant application due Thursday to Chester County for Phase One of all the infrastructure envisioned in the Gay Street Study completed last year. The change to this since last week is the dollar amount of the grant ask. We have a new engineer's cost estimate as of yesterday. And so that new number reflects seventy-five percent of that total project cost. And I just wanted to highlight that change since the committee looked at it.
Okay, comments or questions about this?
Sorry, Mr. Williams, what, what was the number before? It was six seventy-seven, seven ninety-seven?
Sorry, what?
What was the number before it was six seventy-seven?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand, which was sort of a placeholder.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any comments on this? Are we good to consent for this? All right, we'll put that on consent for tomorrow. Any comments on that for anybody? Okay, twenty-five is approve allocation of funding for four oh one East Gay Street Municipal Roof Project. Nancy?
So last month, the bid was approved, but we didn't ask to use the ARPA money to fund this project. The total bid was awarded for seven, seven forty-eight, two twenty-five. We already have residual money left over from the 2016 bond issuance that was issued for this building. That amount is a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So we're asking for six thirty-seven, one forty of ARPA money to pay for the roof project.
Okay, questions about this? No, okay, we'll put this under consent. Yeah, not, not, yeah, great. Okay, this will go under consent unless there's comments on this. Okay, twenty-six, approve additional allocation of nine thousand eight hundred and ten dollars from American Rescue Plan Act for 2023 General Fund Capital Project. Cartograph Systems Implementation, Project two 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 seven.
All right, Nick Fink, Data Manager. So this is asking for some extra money. Five new licenses for this for our wastewater plants at five hundred dollars a seat. An extra module to handle the sewer pipes. There was some confusion between their wastewater module and their wastewater treatment plant module. Some overlap, but doesn't cover everything. And the implementation costs, and part of these costs will be offset by now two modules we won't be using from the permitting system. So that will save us about three thousand dollars in the permitting system and then this money.
That makes sense. Questions or comments on this? Okay, we can consent to this. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that. All right, that'll go in consent. Twenty-seven is approve the spring tree planting purchase. This was also three oh committee recommendation. Any comments on this? I remember this is pretty straightforward. Okay, this can go under consent as well. Okay, twenty-seven's consent. And then twenty-eight is other business. We have A, approve the fourteen, March fourteen, fifteen, twenty twenty-three Borough Council Meeting Minutes. Any problems with those? All right, those are good under consent. B, announce the May Borough Council Work Session Meeting will be held on May fifteenth, which is a Monday, due to the May sixteenth primary election. We talked about that earlier, are we good with that? Okay. C, discuss purchasing Westchester Borough Flags. Dana, do you want to, is this something you wanted to?
Yes, so we've had a lot of interest in the flags last several weeks. So I called the flag company to order more flags, and the flags have gone from thirty-five dollars per flag to forty-nine dollars per flag. I have spoken to several residents, everybody who's contacted me regarding the flags, that they would be willing to pay the forty-nine dollars. So since it was quite a price increase, I just wanted to check with Borough Council and make sure that everybody was okay with that amount.
Yeah, I, I remember when you brought that up, I thought it was high. But if people are willing to pay it, I personally love seeing the flags on the borough. And if people are willing to pay it, I think it's fine.
Okay.
Forty-nine dollars.
It's been three years since we purchased, so I guess with everything that's been going on.
Yeah, I, I, they're, they're great, just, I just love seeing it in the borough. I wish I'd seen more of them, so. Okay, great, yeah, do we need to actually put this on consent? Or is that just like a, like informally, we just kind of, okay. Yeah, understood, yeah. All right, so that's C, that, that won't technically go on consent, but we, we proved that. Okay, D is announce the purpose of the April eighteenth Executive Session. We met tonight to discuss personnels, personnel issues earlier today. I have number twenty-three under discussion. I have, we're striking number eighteen and nineteen from, for tomorrow night. Any other business?
I have one minor thing. I know, I know the hour's late. We went to some lengths to print out the purchasing policy as well as a diagram that explains how things operate today. We're, we're not going to hash that out all out right now, but I want you to have a document documenting what we do. And if you're a flowchart person, that, that's going to work for you. The second thing I want to bring to your attention, and I kindly asked that we put it on discussion for tomorrow, is we've been having ongoing problems at the High Street Garage with water intrusion in one of our retail space. It's a known problem. It's gotten a little bit better since we did the work last year, but it's still, it still rears its head, and it's a strange, leaks are a strange, strange thing. And we went out and sought architectural help to help us diagnose the problem and also to help us with lease negotiations in terms of understanding what it would cost to replace a storefront and so forth. Those are all things that are in our very near future. We talked to a few firms on the phone. We had site visits with two of them. Just so happens that the person I'd like to work with going forward happens to be in the room. Mr. Cherry's firm was, was with, with us, and he's interested in volunteering with the borough. So we did meet with Mr. Cherry and discuss the borough's needs. This would be a, and I'll pass this around once I'm done talking. This would be a per hour engagement of a hundred, between one hundred and one hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, depending on the expertise of the person involved. And this would be able to, this would help me and, and the Public Works Department diagnose architectural problems, skill sets we don't have. So we can get advice about what we need to do and how we need to talk to our tenants about systems and, and maintenance issues. And it also could blossom into a relationship down the road where we have persons with this expertise looking at our facilities and giving us facilities, grounds, and assessments so we can plan out our capital improvement schedule in a rational manner. I have discretion to engage professional services without bidding and to do so up to and to not exceed twenty thousand dollars. This is not going to get anywhere near that. But I just want, since it is a contract with an architectural firm, Mr. Cherry, the firm isn't in Westchester, but Mr. Cherry is in Westchester. I wanted to bring the contract to your attention. I'll pass it around now and kindly ask that we add it to discussion tomorrow night so we can have a longer talk about what I just all mentioned.
Okay, let's have that tomorrow night. So we'll add that to our discussion tomorrow night to, for that discussion to add that firm. The only other thing is, we have a lot of things assigned tonight, correct, Dana? Tomorrow night, never mind. Okay, so you're off the hook. I got some stuff to sign, you're good. All right, if there's no other business?
Just, I have one, one item. I just want to make an announcement. I just want to let Borough Council know. Exciting opportunity. I have been appointed by the Chester County Commissioners to the Board of Directors for the Chester County Water Resource Authority. But I'm very excited to get started. Tomorrow night will be my first board meeting as an official member. I was appointed last month. So for those of you who don't know what the, what a resource authority does, they own a couple dams in the, in the county, they work on flood control projects. So actually, I was, I was recruited by them to join the board. They had some vacancies. I'm really excited and hopefully look for some opportunities that can help the borough as well. So I look forward to my journey with them.
That's really awesome, Kevin, thank you.
Thank you.
That's really great. Yeah, congrats on that. No other business, we are adjourned. Thank you.